We find school district budget committee meeting to order at three oh two. And welcome, everybody. I would like to do roll call first and. I am I Leslie Reckler, committee chair is present. And.
Mr. Phillips is present.
Great. And we we have with us today, Dr. Wald. We have translation with Mr. Rescindes. We have this Potter from state and federal. And we have Ms. Weber from the business office, and we have a special guest today, Mr. Heo from the county office. Welcome. Translation is available and Mr. Rescindes just correct me if I'm incorrect. You go to the interpretation globe. And if you speak English, you you click English and you'll get the Spanish. And then if you speak Spanish, you pick the Spanish and you'll get English if there's English. Think I did that correctly? Good. All right. Good for me. Okay, so next thing is approval of the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that? Is incorrect? Or are there any adjustments that we would like to make? You good? I'm good too. Okay, so we will approve the agenda as presented. Do you want to motion in second?
Sure. I move to adopt the agenda.
And I'll second that. All all in favor by roll call vote? Yes.
Yes.
Correctly, yes. Okay, so the one thing I would like to do, though, is I want to put some times on this, if this is okay. And how much are we going to need for the Title III?
I think that with the presentation from Sonia from Orange County, from Contra Costa County, I would like to give her twenty twenty five minutes. There will likely be questions there. So I think another fifteen to twenty minutes. I think that we should really spend a good period of time to understand that issue because it's been one that the community has wanted to really understand.
Okay, so forty five?
Forty five, yes.
Okay. And then how much for the second interim?
I think that I can present in about fifteen minutes. It's very brief this time, and then another fifteen minutes in questions.
Okay. And then the unfunded liabilities?
Again, total of fifteen minutes, hopefully.
And do you think fifteen minutes for questions?
I think I think we can do both in that fifteen minute period, hopefully.
Okay. Oh, you do?
I do. I'm hoping to end early.
Okay. Yeah, I'm done. At five o'clock, I have a hard stop, so we have to be done. Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Do we have minutes?
I thought we had sent a copy, but I'm noting that they did not get attached. So I'm gonna suggest that we table the minutes and I'll bring the minutes back at the next meeting for this meeting and that meeting.
Um, okay, uh, okay, let's do that then. So I would motion to table.
Second.
Okay, and then. Reckler, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Okay, so we'll table the minutes until next time. Okay, so we're now on to public comment. And I'd like to put twenty minutes on the clock with three minutes each. And so do you have a timer? Because I'm set this.
I don't, but I have my I have my phone if we need it, so I can run that. And I'm looking for hands, and at this point, I do not see any hands for public comment at this juncture. But we know that there's public comment for each item, so they may be waiting.
Okay. All right then. So seeing none, we will move on to discussion items and move on to to a which is the Title III overview. And I would like to welcome our special guest, Ms. Sonia Trujillo, who's the Yale Specialist Coordinator at the Contra Costa County Office of Education. Thanks so much for joining us today. I this is the one thing I all of this pandemic and this mess have people beaming in. This is the visitor. So thank you so much for being here. And if you just give us just a brief introduction and tell us just a little bit about what you do, and then we can go into the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, and members of the board and cabinet members. My name is Sonia Trujillo. I am an ELS specialist at Contra Costa County Office of Education and Title III for Region Four. So what I do is I provide consultation and coaching around Title III programs. I assist districts when they go through their federal program monitoring and try to also connect them with maybe perhaps other districts with similar populations and try to really bring some of the districts together to collaborate. Because we know that in these times especially, it's very difficult sometimes to find those resources. And so my primary role is to make sure that districts understand the state language and policies around Title III.
Great. Well, I'm glad you're with us and thank you for the work and we can we can go ahead into the I believe you have a presentation, correct?
Yes, is someone gonna be sharing that or do I need to share it?
If you could share your screen, that'd be great.
Okay, okay, give me a sec. Okay, let me share my screen. Okay, can everyone see that? Perfect. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so so as I mentioned, I'm the ELS Specialist Coordinator at Contra Costa County Office of Education. And so I'm going to give you just a brief overall description of what Title III programs are, their use of their funds, and the purpose of Title III. So here is, and most of my slides will demonstrate and show you state language. Because when I consult districts, it has to come from the CDE website, right? So Title III Part A is a U.S. Department of Education grant program that provides supplemental funding to help support EL and immigrant students. And and one of the main goals here is to help ensure that EL students, including immigrant children and youth, achieve that language proficiency and meet the same standards that all children and students are expected to meet. So you'll see here where you can find that Ed code right there. Title III funding is provided through some grant programs to assist local educational agencies, LEAs, or districts in accomplishing those Title III program purposes. And the immigrant students program is a subset of the EL student program, okay? And it comes from the same funding source, which is Title III. So Title III allocation determination. The Title III program is a formula subgrant. When the allocations are determined as follows. So the CDE will calculate an amount for each English learner and each immigrant student based on the total state number and the amount granted to the state. So this calculation is called the per pupil rate. Okay, and the per pupil rate is then multiplied by the number of eligible students in the district to determine the total subgrant allocated that the LEAs will receive. So as an example, as a very simple example, if the per pupil rate is a hundred dollars and the LEA has about a thousand eligible students, then the LEA is eligible to receive a hundred thousand dollars of allocation. Okay? And again, all of this information we can find on the CDE website is there. So what is the purpose of the Title III program? So we see here that it is just very straightforward. The purpose of the Title III English learner student program is to ensure that all EL students attain that English proficiency, develop high levels of academic attainment in English, and meet the same challenging state academic standards as all other students. That is, the bottom line main goal is to ensure that our English learners are reaching or will reach and attain that English proficiency. So we know the purpose of Title III programs. So what is the use? How do we use Title III funds? These are the required activities that you will find again on the California Department of Education webpage. So one, it is to, again, like I've been saying over and over, to increase the language proficiency of English language learners by providing effective language instruction educational programs, or otherwise known as LIEPs. Two, to provide effective professional development to classroom teachers, principals, and other school leaders, administrators, and other school or community-based organization organizational personnel. So any type of training or professional development that supports English proficiency for English learners can be used. Three, to provide other effective activities and strategies that enhance or supplement those language instructional programs for English learners, which must include parent, family, and community engagement activities, and may include strategies that serve to coordinate and align related programs. So the again, these are required activities, and this is how Title III funds should be used. And LEAs must use Title III funds to supplement. Okay, now I'm gonna I'm gonna keep repeating that word supplement. State language instruction educational programs, again, to meet EL student achievement goals. The state educational agency, the local educational agency, and schools are accountable for increasing the English language proficiency and core academic content knowledge of EL students. Okay, so a little bit more, I'm going to be referring to that word supplement. So what does that mean? So here we see a graph, right, of the stairs. We see the LCFF funds, which are meant for all students, okay, including our English learners. That those monies that are for all students. Then we have the Title I funds, right, that are for qualified students, including EL students. But as we go up the steps, we see Title III EL Code four two zero three for students identified as EL only. Title III funds, again, are to be used only for English language learners. And then as we go up the stairs, we see even more restrictive funds. Title III IMM is for immigrant students, so for students identified as immigrant only. And as we go up the stairs, Title I Part C, we see migrant. Okay, and those are the funds that are to be used for students identified as migrant only. So again, as we go up the stairs, the funding gets more restrictive. But we also know that the LCFF resources must be used to provide those base services and programs to English learners. Okay, so for example, a district has a core curriculum, maybe it's Hoofden Mifflin, that LCFF funds can be used to purchase those core curriculum materials. Title III funding can be used to enhance, to supplement, the core curriculum. Title III monies cannot be used to buy the core curriculum materials, can be used to supplement. So anything that's above and beyond, because we want to ensure again that our English learners are going to reach English language proficiency. I also wanted to point out, I saw this the other day at a CDE webinar, the use of Title III funds for distance learning, because there were some questions about that as well. And so they pointed out the supplement, not supplant, applies to funds under ESA even when an LEA is conducting remote learning. However, while schools are operating via remote learning, Title III funds may be used to supplement, right? The basic instruction or support that those academic needs provided to English learners. So Ted, like I mentioned before, Title III funds may not be used for core supports and instruction. Because again, district and LEA is obligated to provide core curriculum to all students. But Title III funds are to be used in addition to to enhance, to supplement. And I did put a link in here, because we all know that things are constantly changing, right? Given the current circumstances, so it's always important to go back to the webpage. You know, things will happen in two weeks. And we always had to go back and look and see. Okay? So I did put a link in here for the most frequently asked questions around COVID and English learner services. So in summary, just wanted to point out again, you know, I know I gave you just a very brief overview of Title III, but I want to make sure everyone understands, you know, that the purpose again is to help ensure our English learners, including immigrant children and youth, attain English language proficiency. That is the main goal of Title III and its purpose. And the use of the Title III funds is to improve the education of English learners by helping them to learn English and meet those challenging state academic content and student academic achievement standards. And Title III supplements the LEA's basic core EL program, which is scientifically based and effective in increasing English language proficiency. And so the bottom line that I've I've told districts to ask themselves this question. Would the proposed funds, now, when we are looking at Title III funds, are these are these monies that we would use if we did not have the core funding or the LCFF? Okay, would the proposed funds be used to provide instructional programs in addition to or supplement an instructional program that would otherwise be provided to EL students in the absence of Title III? So an example again is is the curriculum. You know, I was talking to a district where they wanted to buy Imagine Learning. And so I asked them, why is Imagine Learning bought for all students? Or is it just for English language learners? So in that particular case, Imagine Learning was being bought for all students. So they cannot use Title III funds for that. Okay, because this is some, again, that is very restrictive and is very specific to its purpose and to the population. Okay? And that is what I have in in terms of my description, right, of Title III funds. It's the program and its purpose and the use of the funds. I'm gonna stop sharing now. Okay. You're on mute. Mr. World, I think you're on mute.
There we go. So I just want to thank Sonia for really going to the breadth of what Title III is for. And for those that are listening, reclassification is usually about a four to five year process before a student gets there. If all is going well, you're hoping that fourth grade or fifth grade, you're getting them towards that fluency. And when it's done right, and the students have the right support, your reclassified students tend to be one of your higher performing subgroups throughout the entire school. So it's really important that this gives them that jump start as we go. And well, we'll talk more about how we use our Title III funds and some of the changes we've made in the last twelve months since we started here looking at the fact that it truly does need to be supplemental. It cannot support the ELD program in the classroom. That is core. A great example was the Internationals Program. It's a fantastic program that we're running at Richmond High School and at Helms. Well, originally, Title III was being coded to the Internationals Program. But that is the core focused curriculum for those students. You can't use Title III for those dollars. Where you could use it is to supplement above and beyond to do an extra period of tutoring that nobody else is getting for English learners. That would be appropriate. To do staff development for the teachers there, that would be appropriate. So that was one of the things that we made changes, where there's been a lot of conversation about the district journaling and moving expenditures that were in Title III to a different place. What we did is we undid everything that was in Title III last year and the year before. We moved all of the things that could or could not be so that our Title III was completely pure to ensure that it's going to be supplemental moving forward. And by doing that, we we put it into expenditures that were directly for English learners only and not sup not supplanting they were supplemental. That allowed us to move forward this year, where Title III is one hundred percent focused on that. We also have designated, because we know that there were services that are needed. We have one million dollars set aside, approximately one million dollars for this summer, dedicated to services for English learners, which will all be supplemental because summer one is not required, and two, it'll be focused on those English learners. And that is LCFF funds, not Title III funds. But the confusion has been, because the Title III carryover was eliminated, spending all of those pieces last year. There's this concern out there that money was taken away from English learners. Not a single dollar was taken away. In fact, we're providing more services moving forward for English learners than we were before. And I think this is a really important piece now for your questions about what can we spend Title III on and how should we be using it? Because that's really where our focus needs to be. And also, we do have with us the Deputy Superintendent of Contra Costa County Office of Education, Bill Clark, to if there's any questions for him, he'll be around for the second interim, too.
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Clark.
Thank you very much. Nice to be here.
So we'll pass it to the question stage, trust directly.
Okay, sure. Mr. Phillips, Board Member Phillips, do you want to go first?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right then, I'll get started. I've been I've been thinking about this a bit. So when you this district's Mr. Heo normally, what do they spend money on?
When they're using Title III funds, what do they normally spend it on?
Yeah, typically see.
What I typically typically see is professional training for their teachers, mostly around integrated designated ELD. So they'll send their staff for any type of training that's specific to support their English language learners. I've also seen some additional ELD supplemental materials, and that could be a specific ELD component that they're looking at to either use online. I think I've seen a lot lately on some remote learning strategies that they purchase for our English language learners. I also see on occasion what Mr. World had mentioned, a summer program that's specific to English language learners. And that is very important to remember exactly how you explained it, because it's not that we're where we have to be careful is to say, for example, there was a summer program that the district is offering. And then, but there's another program, you know, that's just for English language learners. But do they not have the option to go to this other summer program, right? So given that districts are offering a specific program just for English language learners, then that is a proper use of Title III funds. So I've seen a lot of summer programs being offered or courses as well. So those are the different types of materials, professional training programs that are specific in addition to for specifically for English language learners.
Okay, great, thank you. And when you do your monitoring, do you do you look at budgets as well for districts?
So to be very transparent, honest, that is the one area that, I mean, I do look at them. But however, I always ask one of the CDE people to look at it with me, because every district is different. And sometimes some districts have unique situations, and so it's not always so black and white. You know, so it's important to look at the different budgets and the categories and the findings. But I have on occasion looked through, but I always make sure that I refer back to one of my CDE colleagues to make sure that everything is is balanced and checked.
And.
If I can make a quick comment there, I think another area that our office relies on is the focus work that happens with your independent auditor as far as federal programs. So there's a section of Fed the federal program audits that appear in your audit report. And any major programs are selected for specific sampling and testing. So they would evaluate expenditures that are that are coded and have been charged to the program for their appropriateness. That's something that we rely on when we look at the audit reports.
And then we have both our lead internal auditor who reviews that work. She's actually in the audience. And then we also have our state and federal programs director Lynn Potter, who's here, that also take a look at the legality of the expenditure and the appropriateness of the expenditure. And I think the two are different, because appropriateness is about, are you getting the actual gain that you're looking for for the students? And then the legality is, is it legal to charge it to Title III? Just because it's legal doesn't mean that it's appropriate. And I think that is the real important nuance to these conversations.
And Mr. Heo, when you work with districts, what what would typically, when or where, you know, how do you come in contact with districts?
So I have an English learner network at Contra Costa County, and I try to reach out to as many representatives from each of the local H and school districts. That is where I give state CD updates and a lot of it's Title III, LPAC, you know, anything that has to do with English learners. So that's that's one way that I reach out to districts. Another way is if a district is going under FPM, the federal program monitoring, a lot of times they will reach out to me. Or the CD might also provide me with a district name, you know, and a district contact that may need support or help with their FPM. So that's how they I get a hold of our districts or they get a hold of me as well.
Okay, thank you. And then moving into federal audits, and I don't I don't know who answered some of this, so. What is the so I'm just whoever this is, because I'm not entirely sure. So what what is the freaking sweet frequency? What triggers those? You know, tell me a little bit about the who, what, when, where, why, how that happens.
So there there are several, I'll start, and then they can add in. There are several different audits. The federal program monitoring runs on a cycle. And usually, there's different types of reviews. There's the in-person review, and then there's the data review. They can run, they run every two, usually on a two-year cycle. Sometimes you can get a four-year cycle. Depending if you have findings, you may have them come back until those findings are reconciled. We happen to have undergone a federal program monitoring review last year. Many people are aware, prior to this board coming in to their seats, we received those findings. And there were quite a few areas that we were deficient in Title III oversight. A lot of that had to do with staffing. Our director position had been vacant. When when I started in the district that I never actually met that director, that executive director of Title III. So there was there was a gap in leadership, and some of the pieces were not fully overseen. We had to do quite a bit of corrective action to get things back on track. We now have a very dedicated and solid person in that position. She just started this year. She was appointed by the board. She is now working through ensuring that there's synergy between early literacy and English learner development. And I think there's a big match between the two. She was our coordinator of early literacy, and now she has both roles. She was our coordinator of early literacy and now she has both roles. And her goal is to ensure that there is that supplement piece as we're trying to bring those students with early literacy, it's about reading by third grade. With Title III, it's about taking that same student and putting them on the role of proficiency in or fluency in English by fourth or fifth grade. And so the reviews happen every two years, the county will periodically. Bill Clark will to say that they look at our budget for compliance, but they're not looking at the program side. And then as needed, Sonya, you can talk about your role.
Yeah, pretty much. Repeating what Mr. World was saying, I know in speaking with other EL specialists, sometimes the state will look at data, you know, and will look at how the English learners are progressing. And that they use either the LPAC, the SPEC, of course, right now it's difficult to obtain that data. But sometimes if districts are not meeting, not that they're not meeting the needs, but if if English learner students are below an academic standard, they'll start to look at districts and seeing what can we do to support them? Because that is the whole process of an FPM is to ensure that that the county is supporting the districts and the districts are supporting the programs that are so needed for English learners to reach that language proficiency. So data is one of the areas that that the state will look at sometimes.
So that was just a lot of information. Let me just see if I can just bring it back. So we can expect something every two years. Most of the time, there's going to be some sort of touching of the Title III. Sometimes it's just data sent, but in other times they come in and they just do a full out audit. Is that correct? Is that how I should understand it?
We anticipate next year we will have one again.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm going to anticipate that we're going to be on there. We're going to be a friendly friend to keep those files out front because I think we're going to have company for a while. So had we been doing just data submissions and then all of a sudden they were like, ding, it's your turn or what? How does how does that happen?
I don't have, I don't know, Lynn. So it was data Regina for the first two years?
I can, I can, I can speak to, I think, let me just make sure I understand your question. You're asking when the FPM comes, do they do they typically only look at data? Do the data review? Let me, can you ask your question one more time so I'm clear? I can answer you clearly.
Sure. And I and I'm not entirely sure. I'm having a lot of internet issues today and electricity issues. So here we go. Okay. So I you may lose me. We're having some issues here today, but the question was like, how how do these audits work? Is it like data, data in person, data, data in person, or like, how did we like get, you know, the the card pulled and they went through every file?
So so the this is a program audit, not a fiscal audit. So they're 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 heavy on program, light on fiscal. Of course, they're looking at budgets, but they really are looking at program budgets through the context of program. So, you know, are we doing the types of things that Dr. Will talked about in terms of meeting student needs? So that we, I have been in the district for a really long time. They have always come to our district on cycle. We have never missed an FPM as long as I've been here. And the cycle is the first one year they, as Dr. World said, they come and they it's an onsite visit, they visit classrooms, they look at the evidence in person. They're looking for all sorts of things for everything from instructional practices and implementation of professional development to how we're managing our paperwork such as our reclassification process. They look at all of that. It's a very big program. Then, of course, they look to make sure we're spending our money correctly. The next year is all online. So we're submitting all those documents online and 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 it's the same review, it's just a different, it's just a different format. It's the same, it's the same breadth of it. If there's an instrument that they look at, it's a very large instrument. We we know it, we, you know, you know, it now will be the same, maybe modified, but it's the same one. They're always looking at the same elements. I mean, it may change as the regs change, but primarily it's it's it there is set elements that they're going to look at. And that's true for all of our federal programs.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. So in in this is fine, is having findings unusual or?
It's routine, which is basically what I was going to say.
It's, yeah, as Ray, Regina is routine. I mean, it is, I I don't, I mean, well, I'll say this, some programs this year, congratulations, did not have a, you know, our uniform complaint did not have any findings. Our after-school program did not have any findings. For the ones that have heavy spending, we typically have some, I mean, Title I had a couple of findings. You know, they're they're going to find with this many with this many programs is this in this this amount of money and this many people, they will find a little something. I mean, an example of a little something they found is that in one of the school plans, the school bought snacks for parent events and in their school plan, they listed as materials and supplies rather than snacks for parent events. Well, that was a finding. So there are degrees, there are degrees of of detail that they look at and you just sometimes can't catch them all. You know, so there are little findings and then there are big findings.
And how subjective are they?
The
I mean, feeling that sometimes you're like, okay, that will bear or oh, that was, you know, really nitpicking?
Well, my nitpicking is there. I mean, you know, so I'm
Just curious if it's like I don't want to send anybody up. It's just to kind of feel through, you know, like it's really not to set anybody up. I just wanted to understand like
It's a really good question. When you have ten, twelve findings, you have to be able to discern, are these serious findings or there's, Lynn just said, is it that we miscoded food from supplies to food? Well, there were quite a few that were those simple ones. But there were also some very significant findings in this most recent FPM. I'm going to use the internationals as the perfect example. Now, we had already found
That's my next. So my next question is, in the list that we had, is it subjective? Is it, you know, like, what happened there? Is it is a serious so?
It it, there were some serious ones. Now, we had already identified those prior to FPM coming in. We were already moving things over. But I'm a big believer you don't shy away from areas where you need to improve and you can always use it as a learning opportunity. So we knew the findings were going to come. We had already made the shifts and done the pieces. There were a couple that we didn't necessarily see it the same way as the reviewer. But Sonia explained it pretty well right there. If you would always have that, then it really can't go to Title III. We had some toses, teachers on special assignment that were being paid out of Title III. They were focused on English learner support. We felt when it was created that that was a compliant exercise. The findings said it was not, even though it was dedicated. And that's the that's the crux of Title III to understand that you have to go a second level into the supplement. And at the time, as the district knows, we're going to talk about second interim in a minute. We were in significant budget issues back in 2019. And so just to keep the lights on, any dollar was being used to try to keep positions and supports for our most needy students. And so the intent was to support English learners and continue to use it and use Title III. Unfortunately, when you get down to all the layers, that's not an appropriate expense. It's fine in L cap, but it's not okay in Title III. And so we had to do multiple switches to identify those dedicated services versus those that meet the criteria. And that's where a lot of the misunderstandings of us trying to clean up the Title III budget and start over. And that's what we did. We started over. We said, you know what? This doesn't work. Everything out, now new things in that are going to be compliant. And that's what occurred over that year. And it's hard to see because you're moving stuff both ways in journals and across the books. But there's no other way I know of than to start over.
Okay. And then how, and then I'm just going to ask a couple of other things just on this part of it and then we'll move into the financial numbers that you have there. So as a board, as board members on this committee, as a board, what are our best practices to ensure correct and faithful oversight? When it's not a huge line item, it's a million boxed, you know, overall in the in the big picture, but it's super, super important. So as board members, what what do you recommend to us?
So I have my answer, but I'm going to defer first to Sonia, what she believes board members should ask. And I haven't scripted this, so I might regret it in a minute.
Well, I mean, to me, always, always a district should come together as a team to discuss, you know, the divisions and goals of Title III, right? To understand it, its purpose and what the goals are in the Title III program. And always communicate with each other. You know, and perhaps maybe have some budget meetings, you know, and come back to it. You know, come back to what are what is being spent, come back to, is this appropriate? Come back to is is this, are these Title III funds being used to help our English learners increase the language proficiency? And again, to ask that question, in the absence of Title III, you know, would we be using these funds? Because again, we have the funds for all students, but we have the Title III funds specifically for English language learners. So just coming back to it, you know, you you always have to look at your program, evaluate it. Is it being effective? Do we need to see areas of, do we have areas of growth here that we need to look at? You know, those findings, take them as Tony said, as as a learning experience. That is what FPM is all about, is to consult and coach districts. This is the finding, it's not a deem, what can we do to make it better for our EL students?
And I'm going to jump on that and go additive. It's really three things that as a board member, I want to ensure that I see. I want to see that every student that is an English learner has a dedicated block of ELD built into their instructional day as part of our base model. That is essential. That was one of our hallmarks that we ensured when we built our distance learning model. You actually see ELD called out. I I challenge many districts to show that in their distance learning models where they actually put the ELD block and called it out directly. So that's number one. Number two,
That needs to be funded by Title III.
No, general fund.
That's general. Okay. So what I'm asking is it's a little different. And I think that what Mr. Hughes said is really good. So she gave me a filter. Okay? My filter is, are we only using this for Title III? That's its only purpose. And so that's, that's excellent. And thank you. That we used to have one at work. Unique, authentic, always affordable. And I went through that filter and if it didn't hit it, it was, I knew it was out the door. So that's excellent. So as a board member, how do I apply that filter? You know, top level, 30,000 feet. I don't really want to be down on the line items. I could, but you know, not really enjoy that. Do I make sure ensure everybody's trained? Do I establish my relationship with MDAC and make sure that they know, like, give me some big, you know, like, what are the big ways I keep my my sights on this?
So the first two are are
And I'm talking about compliance, compliance. Okay.
Make sure that our teachers and our educators are trained to support English learners. Make sure that we are connected with MDAC and the vision of MDAC to ensure reclassification. I would then add, we want to be having a deeper look at the LPAC scores. And these are the English learner achievement progress reports is really what it is. Because how many students are moving a level? And if they're not moving, yes.
Sure. But I'm not sure, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm not sure I'm getting my question answered. How do I ensure compliance? I'm I'm not sure it's an LPAC score that is the is what I'm looking for right now in this moment. I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's what that money, how does Title III go to impact that score? That's what I was going to go to. What do you, once you see that score?
Okay, so I'm so as a board member, what I'm trying to ask is, as a board member, I never want to see this again. So what's my strategy? Or I want to see like, you know, you coded food as material and supplies. I don't want to see like anything big. So what strategies do I as a board member implement to ensure that you know, that doesn't happen? Without pulling the, you know, like, there's a lot of line items and stuff. I really don't want to do that. So big picture stuff. I mean, one of the things is to work with MDAC. One of the, I mean, ensure the county is, I mean, like, what what big strategies do I do to keep us on track?
Well, there's one more. We create an English learner master plan that ultimately the board has to approve. In that English learner master plan, it has the activities. It has the activities that are going to be addressed. It's very similar to the L cap. The the DL cap goes to run sets of priorities, but the master plan is this is our goal for English learners, but then in it, it says, these are the strategies and programs we're going to implement. From that, the board can quickly use that filter you just described to know which could be funded by Title III and which could not. And that's if you ask the simple question for how we do this, it's through that English learner master plan and asking the right conversations of those activities that are going to be brought forward to meet the goals of that plan. And how is each activity going to be funded? Sorry, it took so long to get to that, but that's the answer.
And then can I add something to that?
I'm trying to keep it at 30,000.
I know. Yeah. I mean, that was beautiful what you just said, Mr. Phillips. Because the EL master plan, I did, I had the grace of observing a district pre-pandemic of them developing their EL master plan. And in that committee was parents, teachers, school board members, district leaders, administrators. And so you had all of your stakeholders coming together, developing a vision and a mission statement for their EL master plan. And that's what I mean by coming together as a team, right? Because when everybody knows and understands their common goals for your English learners through the EL master plan, then you'll be able to better understand, like Mr. World said, what are, how can we fund some of these programs? Or how are they funded, you know? So I just wanted to share that with you, that 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 is coming together as a school community, as West Contra Costa unified school community knows and understands the EL master plan and what programs are being offered for the EL students.
Okay, so I'm like so excited, you know, master plan, that's, those are like my two favorite words. So when are we going to get to see that or where where are we with that?
So, and I would have to bring Christopher Signio in to get and but they are working on that. And I know that they're working through the MDAC in that process.
Okay, so I'm getting out of this that we're going to have a master plan, which I'm like, that's like the best news I've heard all week. So that's great. Thank you. On the established a good relationship, my MDAC leaders, which I already have. And am I doing anything? What else am I doing? Is it coming to the board on the schedule? Or does the master plan cover all of that?
The master plan comes on schedule. Once it comes through it, then it becomes a three-year plan for implementation. There, next year, there will be an FPM, so obviously we'll be reviewing it. And then the next area that the board, as we're doing, not the interims, but outside of the interims, it's a good opportunity to build in the schedule to have programmatic conversations. Because it's not just Title III, we have our Title I program. We have our college and career programs, we have other things. And it's an opportunity to bring each of our program people and get out of the money side, get back to as Lynn said, and get out of the money side, get back to, as Lynn said, it's a review of the programs. Are they meeting the goals? And then are the dollars that are attached to that taking us in the direction that we wanna go? And I think that's the natural cycle we wanna get ourselves into, which is the core business of what we're doing here.
Okay, and Mr. Clark, are you okay with that? Does this sound like a sound plan for me, us?
I, I, I think you had, have had some great questions today. And I think that has elicited some detail that I, I, I think you have hit on, that's, that's gonna be important to you, and it demonstrates that the agency has a longstanding history and practice that, that you should feel comfortable with as far as them addressing outstanding issues as they move forward.
Okay. All right, what else haven't I asked on this particular little thing? Because then I do wanna touch on the money part of it.
I think the next question is the money.
So I've asked everything. I didn't leave anything on the table. Nothing.
No, I, I honestly, this is one of the deeper conversations. I, I, I've been doing this a long time. This has been a very good conversation about what Title III is. I don't think people understand. Title I, everyone kinda knows, it's to help your socio-economically disadvantaged. Title III, you hear English learners, but you don't quite understand that it is very prescriptive on what it's supposed to do. And I don't think people recognize that it is very narrow in its focus there to really get to one core incident. So I think you really did take us to a deeper dive than I've been part of in any of these before. And I think her internet got her.
I, I think I'm back now, I'm sorry, I- trying to hold it together here, okay.
So yes, that was it.
Am I here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's good, all right. So I think I, I think I have an outline, we know what it is, we know what we're looking for. Thank you, that filter, I will remember that for the rest of my life, that was great. And I'm so excited to hear about this master plan, this is like, it's like Christmas in March. And, okay, so that's good, all right, so let's talk money now.
So-
Have a couple of docs.
So we can certainly, okay, so let me bring those up just a moment here. And I'll get them, and all we did is just shared a couple of the budget documents. Let me get out of here to get that document up, sorry, I wasn't- So let me see-
I mean, just briefly on the money, you know, just on the money, you can bring it up, but really, I mean, I wanna hear from MDAC, are we whole and do they believe us?
And so, there's been a lot of question about, and without bringing up the document right now, we had for several years running, we had carried over Title III monies, meaning that it wasn't spent for the students that it was generated for. Each year, we get just over between 4201 and 4203, the immigrant money and the regular Title III money, just about a million dollars. We had carried over 800, 900,000. And then the next year, carried over 800, 900,000. What that meant was the money was not being spent on English learners. If, in federal programs, you have a 15% carryover rule. Once you go over that, you can get a waiver once. Sometimes in the great world, Bill can pull a miracle and maybe we can get a second waiver. You're not gonna get a third waiver. And what ends up happening is those dollars get returned to the government. They net, they don't serve our students in any way. So we had had that carryover for several years. When I walked in, my job last year was a challenge. We had a structural deficit, we had quite a few issues. We had monies being spent in places they shouldn't be. And it wasn't anyone's fault, everyone's just trying to keep the lights on. But we knew as we were doing cuts, we also had to redo practices. So what we did is we analyzed every expenditure in the budget. We found expenditures that were legally allowable to be funded by Title III that were funded in other resources, in some cases even general fund. We utilized Title III for those expenditures. We then had carryover, that happened to be in this case, general fund. We dedicated that to English learners. So it wasn't Title III anymore, and I think that's been the biggest misunderstanding of all this. When you get into financial, everyone kind of follows the money and they think it falls in one resource. And in the end, what we did is we made sure that we had the money that we should have spent on English learners, staying in the district so that we can spend it on English learners. And we took everything that was in Title III out, started over, so that each year, we spend the Title III dollars on the students that need those dollars today and not have a carryover and get into that 15% rule. So I've struggled to do a better job of explaining that to the public, to the MDAC. And so I take blame for not being able to articulate that in a better way. If somebody else can, I would love to have them do that. But that was what occurred, there's more money. We would have carried over 600,000. We ended up with one, just under a million dollars, that's in that dedicated for English learners fund. While there was no Title III carryover, there was that money carried over. And there, and it's still there for this summer.
Okay, so once again, the next question is, all right, so now I know there's a 15% carryover rule. And once again, the next question is, as a board member, why do I need to make sure that that, you know? And I actually have a lot of experience, not direct experience, but I also know it's almost impossible to spend down to zero, just because of my previous career. So I, I understand that. But I also wanna, I, you know, I, I, I wanna make sure at max, we're at 15%. And I also wanna know, is there an average of carryover that people usually see? Knowing that it's impossible to spend everything.
It depends on the year. 10 to 15% is very, very normal. Because you might have a position that goes vacant in the middle of the year. You might have a program that doesn't happen in pandemic world. It can be a lot more when things change around. The question that you ask as a board member is you ask me in September, when I bring those unaudited actuals, you say, what was carried over in the federal programs? That's where the conversation goes, because then that money gets redistributed back out for programs each year. But that's, the, that's kinda like the scorecard day. And then you ask, how is it going to be spent this time? Those are the two kinds of questions. Because again, that carryover should be aligned back to our English learner master plan. And Ruben did text me, there, the plan does exist, they're gonna put it in the Friday memo, next Friday. So you'll get to see it again, it's coming there. And then, so how does it align to the English learner master plan? If it's Title III, how does it align to your single plans for, at each of your sites? If it's Title I, how does it align to your roadmap? If it's LCAP, those are the conversations that you would wanna have. And I will now defer, if I missed anything, to either Sonia or Bill, if there's something they wanna add. And I'm seeing no's, so.
What else have I missed?
Um, let's see.
Because tell me, because no, I'm gonna find it eventually.
Well, no, you, I think you did a really good job of talking about the program focus. I think we've had a conversation, and I saw from, one of our MDAC members said that they do understand what I said, so I'm going to take this as a victory and please invite me. And I will be glad to come and say whatever to, to you at the MDAC, and we'll have public comment in a minute so you can speak. But I hope that the, our goal is to get to a place where the conversations are not about what is the dollar? Where was the dollar from, where did it go? That the conversations are about where are our students today? Where do we want them to be tomorrow? What can we do to get them there? And I think that's really the conversations that we wanna get the board to. Not having to focus on, hey, what's this FPM? Where's this audit, where's that? Let's get back to the core business of what we're here for.
Right, but we need to, you know, I need to know the questions to, we need to come clean. We need to establish trust, and then I need to know the questions to, you know, ensure that from 30,000 feet, I can drive forward with faith and not be in the line items, because I have the ability to do that. You know, I have that background, I'm really trying not to.
Right, the other thing you wanna make sure of-
That takes me off what I need to do, is to be your vision and your, you know, so.
You, you wanna make sure that we have the belief that we spend the most restricted dollar first. And that seems odd, but it, those restricted dollars are hard to spend, and that's when your carryover keeps adding up and adding up. You wanna make sure you're spending your grants, spending your restricted dollars so that your carryover is your most unrestricted, where it can be used for many different purposes. Then as a board, you can commit things for a specific purpose or assign them for a specific purpose when we have carryover. And that's what we did with this English learner money.
Okay. Alrighty, any other questions on this? Anything else I should know, please tell me, because I will eventually find out.
No, I'm, I was pleased to be part of this today.
I'm pleased to have you here. Okay, so we'll go to public comment.
See if there's any hands.
And I need some help on this, I'm not such a good multitasker on this kinda stuff.
So I'm looking, and there are, wait, there is a hand. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute, and I believe this is one of our MDAC members, Stephanie Cicada.
I have my, I, I can time it, so three, three minutes.
Stephanie, man-
More for you, Stephanie, anything you want, Stephanie, okay.
No worries. Thank you for taking the time to finally question and scrutinize the Title III funding. I think it's been a long, a long waiting for us on our end. I wish Erica would have been here with us, not sure if she got the details completely, how to log in. Leslie, you have been asking great questions. Some of these questions we wouldn't, we have been wanting to answer for the longest of time. Dr. Tony, we get completely how you wanna explain. Well, I get it completely. I, I can easily explain it to Les, to Erica for her to understand, and our MDAC members as well. It's not a lot, it's, it, it's a lot to take in, it's a lot to learn as a mom, unless you have the free time to like sit down and try to understand the district lingo and understand all this budget expenditure from general fund to our SNC funds and all this other matter that we have. It's not easy for our parents to understand. I think my biggest frustrate, frustration is like the transparency, we get it, you've been here probably a year or so now. So this has history before even you got here. Don't take it offensively in that sense, but we just want the transparency just solely for English learners, especially looking at right now how distance learning has brought out so much inequities. We see our black and brown children suffering the most. There are services that they are entitled to, there's like needs that we see that are arising. It's just how do we make sure that the budget or the, the funding that's coming towards those needs are being spent adequately to serve those students? And so with the questions Leslie has asked, I hope they continue to ask the full board, and the board can ask more of the district staff to get all these answers. The master plan has been in existence for six years now. I think year after year, since the sixth year consecutively, at our LCAP meetings, at our MDAC meetings, I have been questioning as to when we're gonna reevaluate that, just because there's no set outcomes. These consultants that were hired years ago, to me, literally that document's just a piece of trash, there's like no guidance, there's no way to guide us as an MDAC to hold our schools accountable in regards to that sense. So I'm desperately eager to see if we can reevaluate that and make a new one. I'm not sure who the district will hire, but I know we really need to really evaluate that. Our, our county, I'm like extremely disappointed that nobody really oversees that. I think it's been frustrating fight for me, specifically just as a mom of four. I would have thought I would have transitioned out, but I have a kindergarten now at Terra Hills that I'm just starting again. So the district will continue to see me at least for another four more years as an MDAC rep, fighting for ELs, knowing that this isn't just to benefit our Latino students. As we see in Grant, we're having a high number of Guatemalan students that speak mom. We have a high number of Arabic students. Terra Hills, we see a high number of Portuguese students, so.
Can I extend her time, President Phillips? Yeah?
If you'd like.
Okay.
I'll, I'll close down, sorry.
Do you have more, do you have more to say, because I did this, I did-
For you. I know, we just wanna ensure that our district and staff and everybody's well aware that this isn't just for our Latino students. We're not literally just fighting for them, this is all for our parents that are struggling to provide that extra support during distance learning. Plenty of you know that we have a high number of newcomers students as well, Richmond High and Hell's Middle School, some in elementary at Grant. I'm just wondering how those students really were access, able to access the technology during these times? How did these parents really provide that support if they did not understand the English language? But thank you for this time, thank you, Mr. Phillips, for putting this on the agenda. Thank you, Leslie, thank you, Marty, for interpreting. I, I do hope our families are listening, but thank you and Dr. Wall for taking the time also. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's it for public comment.
That's it for public comment, okay. Alrighty, so we will move to discussion, and President Phillips, anything to discuss?
The only thing that I wanna add, and Ms. Akira just mentioned this, the master plan is an old document. Lisa Jimenez, who is no longer with us, and that may be the director that Mr. Wolf is saying he never met. But she was supposed to be working to update that. So I'm glad to hear that Mr. Aurelio and MDAC is working on it. But this update that people are asking for is an update that is, I think, years in the making. That work started some time ago, so if we can expedite that, but make sure that, you know, we're actually doing it correctly, not just, it was not just speed over, you know, form. But yeah, that, that work was supposed to be in Lisa Jimenez's, you know, on her table, and she hasn't been with us for quite some time.
Okay, so I'm a huge plant, fan of master plans, I almost can't function without them. I come from a background that is like, all right, I come from a background that was a little obsessive, but, I mean, we were updating 30 days, six months, one year, three year, five year, 10 year visions. So I come from a deep background of doing this, and I'm almost flailing. You know, I, I understand why they're flailing, and I do have a copy of their plan. I'm not gonna pull it right now, because it'll bring a whole stack down, but it is several years outdated. I am not the chair of MDAC, but for all of these, for college, for career, for our entire district, for MDAC, for budget and finance, for communications, there needs to be a strategic plan and sub-master plans underneath them. And anything I can do to support that, or give feedback, or structure, or whatever I need to do, that is the way forward. And then they come to the board on a routine basis, or they come in the study session, this is what we hit, you know, this is when we were gonna hit it, these are the dollars assigned to it, and then it's just like, we hit it, we did it, we did great, we did terrible, how are we gonna revamp? And it's just an onward cycle. This is the way of professional, responsible, you know, this is the way to move forward. So in any way that I could support that with MDAC, I am, you know, happy to do that. And I think that's essential. I have a much better understanding of what we need to do as board members. I have a much better understanding- I have a much better understanding of, you know, MDC and what they need to do. We're going to work on a master plan, which I think is great. And, um, I want to, I want to hear from them face to face, not even over Zoom, in person. I want to hear they're okay with the money, um, because I, that's really important to me and I, I want to, I want to be there. When I hear, I don't hear personally myself and, um, you know, hopefully we, we do better on this. So, okay, this was, this was very helpful. So thank you. Um, and yeah, and then once again, if there's something I need to know, please tell me because I will, then trust me, I will eventually find it. Insatiable, I cannot stop getting knowledge, so. Not a, not a good place. Anyway, encourage all of you to take a knowledge break. Okay, anything else on this?
No, I think we're ready for the next item and to say thank you to Sonia, the last.
Yeah, thanks very much. That was, it was great to meet you. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it.
For having me. Thank you for having me.
Learned a lot today.
And since technically this is Bill's job to watch over me anyways, he can at least watch me talk about the second interim.
Um, may I, may I just make one small, one small ask of Regina?
Yes.
Never mind. You put it on legal paper and remember the last meeting when I said I didn't have any? Well, I never bought anymore, so.
I am so sorry.
It's alright, I'll, it'll get me out of the house. I've got the office depot.
My apologies. Are you talking the, the form cash, I bet?
Yeah, it's a little, it's okay. Don't worry. I will, I will go by the.
No, I'm so sorry. That should be the only one and.
No, that's okay. And I should print it. Uh, that's not the problem.
I'll tell you moving forward, we're going to change the way those look.
Oh, yes, we sure are.
Regina has. I, I haven't, but I haven't pulled it out yet. Regina knows what I'm talking about that I want to move to. So you won't see the Saks forms in the future.
Okay, because I'm, I'm polling people with deep budget experience about what these things should look like, so.
It's not that. Well, the Saks forms are the Saks forms, but we're going to do it.
Yeah, the state forms are the state.
Yeah, no, I understand.
We're going to try to make it look prettier somehow, some way.
Gathering feedback to help you and give you a few ideas of some best thinking, so.
Sorry, trustee Reckler.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, so second interim, it's time now. I'm going to share my screen. Um, this is a little briefer than normal, but hopefully it'll play out. Let's see here, share. And go to presentation. See here, alright. So we are halfway through, even though it's past halfway through the year, with our normal budget cycle. Officially every, during the year, we start by June thirtieth, we have the adopted budget, which usually is wrong because the state hasn't figured out what they're going to do. This year, they kind of figured it out early. So I'm not sure. They might actually be done with the budget. I have to read deeper into AV eighty-six and SB eighty-six. Because if they're actually done before the May revision, I don't even know what to do. It's so never happened in thirty years that we're in the weirdest year ever. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, we had the national election, which changed some of the things. We did our first interim and had a very positive meeting with the new board on the sixteenth, even though it was presented to the first board. Um, today we're doing the second interim. We then have this very odd set of dates. On the ninth, we do our public hearing and the LCAP. Because we're back on a regular LCAP cycle. We would then come back and do the budget adoption and the LCAP adoption. But according to the new Essar and SB AV eighty-six, we must approve an addendum to the next year LCAP before we approve the LCAP. So I'm not quite sure how that's going to work in the law, but that's where we're at right now. That we have to do an addendum to the LCAP on, by June first. So more to come on that. When you go to each interim, there are three different certifications that the county office will ultimately determine based on our self-certification. The first one is positive. Positive means that the district can meet its financial obligations in the current year and the next two years. This is all based on AB twelve hundred, um, Assembly Bill twelve hundred, which came into effect unfortunately because of a district called Richmond that had some financial issues. And the state of California created a law to ensure that there was oversight so that that would not happen to other school districts. And I think sometimes we like to escape our past, but sometimes you need to own the past and recognize that the good that came out of it is that this law is there, that there is oversight. There's, um, the fiscal crisis management and assistance team, FICMAT, was founded to help support districts. That's relevant in a minute. The second qualification is qualified. In that certification, it means that the school district may not meet its obligations in either the current year or one of the two subsequent years. That's been the qualification that we've had since I've been here. When my first interim that I brought to this board a year ago, December, was qualified because we were not sure until we had completed all the cuts and done things that we were indeed going to be able to meet our obligations for the two out years. We've been qualified since December of twenty nineteen. That means that that first interim was, the second interim was in, um, March of twenty twenty. And then the first interim in December was. That triggers FICMAT taking another look and doing a physical health analysis of a school district. So they'll be coming later this month to review our books, which is a good thing to make sure. Now, as funny as it sounds, I believe our certification will change in a couple of minutes. But because of that trigger, it has to go. The third possible certification is negative. That means that the district is saying right now they cannot meet their obligations in either the current or subsequent two years. We've been qualified because of the second year out. So in this case, that would be twenty-two, twenty-three. That had been our concern previously, it was always two years away. So this is something that you've seen quite a bit from us as we go.
Blue box.
Well, the, the, the blue box, it's interesting because right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
More changes are happening than ever before. And that is still probably the most important box that we continue to have our voice out there. There were pieces that were built into AV eighty-six. Had we known two or three weeks earlier, we would have been able to advocate for them not to be in there. If we're in that room, we can have conversations. Because often it isn't legislation that's written just for you, but broad legislation, the components of it, you may want to get something in or out of a trailer bill, for example, that goes forward. So advocacy is a big bill, but cuts was our first piece. We made thirty million in cuts. They're real. There are fewer people. Um, Regina and I just got an email from our workers' comp insurance company. We have to send them the estimated payroll. And so we sent it for next year. And they sent back and they go, wait, this is, this is wrong. This is much lower than the last time you sent it. And I had to answer back and I go, yes, it's lower because we did cuts and they're real. And it was kind of validating when an outside agent goes, oh yeah, we see that. Investments, the board has already done that. We're going to be putting money aside in our assignments to support the building of those academies over the next couple of years. Funding shifts, we just talked about one. We just spent an hour talking of the funding shift, moving the Title III and covering that and having carryover in a different spot. And then reserved, we've already talked about the ability to restore OPEB and Fund seventeen so that they're there for a rainy day. It might rain sooner than we think, so we're prepared. So here's what the state did. Proposition nine ninety-eight was improved by three billion. We did have at this point a COLA that is bifurcated. And what I mean by bifurcated is that they're giving us credit for a COLA now after the fact this year. And then giving us a smaller COLA next year, but they're not going to give us any of the money till next year. That reduced our structural deficit by about ten million, of which one million will be added into the supplemental concentration. And so we'll use that through the LCAP side. So I think it's important that when we talk monies, you ask, what is it for a board to do? You want to make sure that we know that certain dollars are supposed to go certain places and that we're accounting for them at the beginning. And not trying to just drop it to the bottom line to take care of a deficit that we're doing it the way the monies are intended. We did receive, we will receive the extended learning block grant, our share of the four point six billion. That's twenty point four million. We are going to do the biggest summer school program we've ever done in person for students. We're already beginning the process of doing that. All grade levels, almost all schools in the district will participate. It will be the largest extended year program we've had. It's not every kid in school, but it's very targeted, but pretty much any student that wants to participate will be able to. We also, um, are doing the other program enhancements, that two billion we are working on. That we had a whole conversation about that last night. Um, give me a week or two and I'll finish on the negotiation side on that. We're doing the CPP next week. The deferrals are still there. And so today I was thinking I might have to bring a cash flow. I don't have that for today. We're going to try on the next meeting to talk cash. If the county treasurer is available, I'm hoping to have them come to speak with us there. We're still working on that. The state, however, though, still projects that they're going to go into a deficit in twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, they always do that, so we're not sure if that's going to happen or not, but we're preparing for it. Right now, the state is doing very well in revenue. So the federal government is sending twenty-four million in Essar two. The way that's going to come out is it will be paid quarterly if you've already spent the dollars. We're using Essar to maintain some of the things that we did not cut two years ago that we kept this year. It allows to keep them even one more year without reduction. So the vast majority of that money is programmed to things that we use that we paid for with CARES Act this year that we'll continue to do next year. And we expect there is more help coming for public education from the Biden administration. The one that we're most interested in are the bottom two. Because special education costs the district over ninety million dollars. We received seven million dollars from the federal government and twenty, a little under twenty million from the state. So the district's general fund has to pick up the rest. If the federal government were to pay their share of special ed, that would free up probably anywhere from five to fifteen million dollars that would instantly be available for services for our students. And then the second one, which is also very encouraging, would be the tripling the Title I. Imagine having those additional dollars for our most at-risk disadvantaged students. This would be one of the things that we've heard over and over again, that we have so many needs that we could do on a supplemental level. So we're very much wanting to keep our voice going that way and being friends with Cindy as she gets set up to go through there as well. This is just another slide of, um, saying exactly what I just said. So Federal CARES Act, folks really continue to ask, what did you do with that thirty-four million? And then the next twenty-four million, how did that help? It helped us bring back supports. It maintained things we would have lost, transportation, food services, things like that. It allowed us to really continue things we wouldn't have been able to do, safety equipment, all the PPE technology. We have spent multiple millions of dollars to buy devices. And there's been some loss of devices and damage, obviously during the pandemic. We will be able to replace them so that every student has that. We're going to be bringing to the facilities committee a conversation about what is the technological infrastructure of our classrooms? And as we may have to do some form of hybrid for a while, we want to enhance the technology so that there is the ability for interaction. And then without the CARES Act, we would be, if we did not have Essar two coming, we would be talking layoffs on Wednesday. We're not talking layoffs. We're not talking reduction in the staff. It has allowed us to maintain, not at the level we want, but still maintain. And it's keeping us focused. We can continue to fund all of our LCAP priorities that were in the budget and continue to fund the opposite of African-American student achievement. We can continue to focus on our English learners because we do have this to keep us somewhat status quo for a couple of years. So this is the most up to date and we're getting better on this. You can see that we do still have a structural deficit of twenty-three million two years from now. Now, this is based on every possible thing we could ever have to buy, having to buy special ed increasing at the highest levels. So we anticipate that that true deficit two years may be slightly lower. But this is the single worst case scenario of where we're at. But we have significant one-time dollars coming through the system. Most of them, they might actually show up this year, the last day, and then have to be carried over, which will be confusing to everyone, but I chose to pretty much market the way I think it's going to show up in our budget. So you'll see that this year we're getting three hundred and ninety-four million, all funds, CARES Act, everything. We're spending three hundred and ninety. So we're already not deficit spending and we're going to have some Essar come in at the last minute that we won't be able to spend in time. So we will carry over. We started with forty-four million in our Fund One and fourteen point seven million in Fund Seventeen. We will end with thirty-four million in Fund One. You're going to go, wait, that went down. The reason it went down is we're doing two things. We're moving this committed back to Fund Seventeen to refill it to thirty-five million at the end of the year. We're also maintaining at this point twenty, we, I know the board had talked about twenty-four. We anticipate there will be other carryover and we will hit the twenty-four. But I'm being true to the numbers now, not adjusting until then. We will, at this point, we're hoping this assignment will be slightly larger. This is for our academies. We're going to put money away and we're hoping that this will be closer to about nine and a half so that it will fund the academies for three years to build them up without having to take resources away from any other program so that by time they're built, they will be self-sufficient. And I think that's the thing that people forget. When you start something new, you have to have that seed money and give it the opportunity to grow correctly and then sustain. So that's what the assignment is restricted is there's a bunch of different funds that have to drop in routine restricted maintenance. Um, your medical, different things drop in their debt service. You go to next year, we're projecting without counting the one-time monies, three hundred and seventy-five million ongoing. And that's why I put these two down below, so you can see the difference between what's real and what's not. We will have three hundred and ninety-nine million in expenses. That's why there, if we continue to maintain every service we have, those would be those services. Some of those could easily be eliminated because they are really focused on COVID supports. But until we've made that decision, I'm keeping them as ongoing expenditures. So you can see that with all of the one-time revenues coming in and our current expenditures, we would have fourteen point three million that would carry over, most of that being in the restricted balances. There would be from these funds that can be spent over two years. We would still maintain the twenty-four million now in committed, spent down a little bit on the assignments because the first year was done, still have the thirty-five million in Fund Seventeen. Go to the second out year. Go to the second out year, revenue at three seventy-seven. Expenditures slight increase because they tend to naturally. That's where you see the first structural deficit. However, we still maintain most of our budget commitment, most of our on seventeen reserve because mo, a big portion of the spending is spending these dollars down. These one-time monies that are coming through. And that's why the structural deficit that's out here in twenty-three, twenty-four is likely below twenty-three million, but not at zero. And so we know that there's still an issue. But when you take a look at all of these here, we will end the second out year with eight point nine nine percent in our unrestricted reserves plus an additional twenty million in committed. So we will, without a doubt, be able to meet all financial obligations for this current year, next year and the following year. And this is without the two billion that we were talking about last night in the board, AB eighty-six. That does not include those dollars in any way. So that is really where we're at. We've restored Fund Seventeen. We will be at the end of the year placing the money that we borrowed last year back into OPEB, so that will be there. We are not deficit spending for the next two years. We will be back to deficit spending in the third year. Part of that is because of one-time monies and intentional, part of it is not. And we're going to continue to use one-time funds to make strategic investments such as the Wi-Fi plan, community Wi-Fi, such as the academies, and potentially putting lasting technology into our classrooms. That's coming soon. We're going to be able to meet all of our financial obligations. Again, I talk about here, we're going to move, my recommendation is next Wednesday, that the board move to a positive certification. However, there's one understanding. All of our bargaining units are currently in negotiation, not just for the spring, but for their successor agreements. Anything that increases costs in those that gets approved. One, Bill, who's sitting here, has to approve and say it's financially allowable under AB twelve hundred. And two, we have to make sure it's going to fit in the NYPD. If something were to be recommended, that would change this, that could change our certification. So based on what I know we're going to spend, I am recommending to the board next week, a positive certification with all of those programs covered and planned for in the budget. And I believe that's the last slide, but I'll check. So I think I just talked about the same thing again, and the rest is acronym. So with that, I'm going to stop and take questions.
Great. Thank you so much. And congratulations with a big question mark up the, on the end for the positive certification. And I'll talk about that in a second. President Phillips, do you have any questions or would you like me to start?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, so I just have a couple. My first question is, why should we believe the state? I, we are, you know, there's just tons of cash coming in. And I look at the same thing that you look at, and I've seen those projected negatives. And I'm questioning that. Is our, are we, is our leg being pulled on this?
I certainly hope so, but I've also seen the state have twenty billion dollar swings really quickly. And we need to remember that the way the state is funded, we are more than forty percent of our income comes from the top one percent of the wage earners. We found that out during the pandemic. Every, we had thousands, hundreds of thousands of people lose their job. There was significant poverty. We had to have rent controls. We had to all these different things. But yet the state made more money. It's because there's such a disparate difference between the high wage earners and the low wage earners that you had a disproportional impact. So here, here's the best way I can describe it. If one of the top one percent gets the sniffles, public education gets pneumonia. They have one bad day, we have two bad years. So we are so reliant on the rich paying and the corporations paying their taxes that it truly could switch. And Elon Musk moves and all of a sudden, we're in trouble. It's that volatile.
Okay, I mean, because I look at the same thing. I mean, it's the same thing, you know, that we have a tier that's really hurting, but our top level in the state right now, I mean, it's just like tons of cash coming in. So I question that. And we talked about, you know, being conservative, which I also believe in as a philosophy and, you know, being very careful. But on the other hand, you know, we're really hollowed out underneath the eyes here. And, you know, if, if we don't have to put it away, I want to put it where we need it. So.
Well, I'm going to defer because there's a document called the Common Guidance. And Bill sends that to me. And Bill, what is the guidance that you, that, and how does that come and why do we have to follow it?
Great, great comment there, Tony. The, that, that message is ju, is developed at the state level. And it's, it's, I'd say it's a committee product that comes out of input from the Department of Finance, which is integral to the development of the state budget and the assumptions that are used in the state budget. We also get impact, in, input from FICMAT and then from the California Department of Education. And so those three agencies, along with the county Office of Education Chief Business Officials meet together. And then they work on the legislation that's coming out. We track that closely. We have analysts and advisors that come in and talk about bills and trailer bill. It gets very particular as far as the la, the very precise language that's being incorporated. We do have opportunities to actually influence legislation in that committee process in terms of how bills might go forward. But from that information, assumptions are developed about the multi-year projection. And I think this is an important thing to understand because districts will sometimes say, or people who are advocating for particular areas may say, oh, you, you, the assumptions that you're using in the multi-year projection are just something that you put together for, you know, to give you a sort of a, an outcome that you had planned for. Well, that's really not the case. The common message gives very specific guidance about what your COLA number is going to be, what your lottery allocation is going to be, your block grant, grant allocation, your statutory percentages, your health, health, not your health benefit, but your Stirs and Purges retirement percentages. All those key factors that drive the major revenue and expenditure assumptions are established by this committee and they're published for each major reporting cycle. So as Tony's indicating, just prior to the development of the second interim report, the common message comes out, common guidance that gives districts this information and direction on how to approach their finances. And so it does provide a state-level common approach to the assumptions that are used in the multi-year projection, and that provides more consistency. This is, it has developed over time, especially under the influence of FICMAT, which it came into being because of the need to, to have another set of eyes or oversight agency looking at district finances to provide an objective evaluation of district-level decision-making. And then over time, the county offices also become much more involved in that process. And Tony's right, we're going to review any settlement proposal that comes forward from the district. And we're going to plug it into the multi-year projection and we're going to verify the assumptions that are used in that projection to make sure they're consistent with the common guidance. And we'll challenge them if, if they're not. And we want to, are, are, we are accountable to the state of California, the state superintendent of schools and FICMAT for our oversight. And we have to report on this, you know, in terms of every cycle, we have to report to districts and their certification, our assessment of those certifications and whether we support those certifications or not. We're also in a position where we could change certifications, the budget certifications, interim certifications based on our analysis of the information and the assumptions that go into those reports. So Tony is very versed in this. We've had plenty of discussions about the assumptions he's using. We watch very closely that deficit number. Of course, we were very active in the development of the budgets and, and worked directly with Tony and FICMAT as you guys very successfully managed, managed what could have been, you know, a state takeover. You, you were that close. And so it's, we actually heard from Mike Fine, who heads up FICMAT recently. I, you know, Mike's a pretty tough guy, but he was pretty complimentary about the leadership and that would include the board. Because you made decisions there that were difficult decisions that pulled the district back from financial disaster, I would describe it. You're, you're in a better situation, but I appreciate your comments about being conservative. You have a response. If the district goes belly up, it is just chaos. And, you know, the, the suffering that, that spills out as a result of that lasts for a long, long time, sometimes more than a decade. Try to, to clean up that. And it's the institutional loss, it's the loss of the social programs, all that, all that can be, all the harm that's done as a result of, of poor fiscal management. It is the one thing that is probably most catastrophic to a district in the event that they slide into that kind of a condition. I'm, I'm watching closely, you know, Tony has talked about a positive certification. We were together on, on the phone with FICMAT, talking about what that certification would look like and evaluated that, the pros and cons of doing so. I think Tony's alluded to the idea of additional costs coming on to the assumptions in terms of salary costs and how that will push your numbers. So that's something that, you know, maybe challenging for you going forward in terms of what decisions happen going forward and how that impacts Tony's assumptions and the multi-year projection. So I've kind of talked a lot there, but I wanted to just to give you some background about that and our role as it has evolved over time. And as, as we become more accountable at the state level and to the districts for the review of their financial information. So I don't know if I, you know, we're still, I, you know, Tony says that, you know, they're, they're, the LAO and Department of Finance are projecting a deficit at the state level. That, for me, that's pretty serious because we're, we're, I would describe, we're in this sort of a burn-off phase where we're, the nation is charging trillions of dollars into the financial system. And I sort of described that, my, you know, my simple comparison is sort of like a sugar high that's burning trillions of dollars. I think California state budget runs, state general budget runs like twenty-five billion a year. So I think a trillion dollars is enough to run the state of California, seventh, fifth largest economy for something like fifty, ten or fifteen years for a trillion budget, you could run the entire state. And they're burnt, I think they're burnt off five or six trillion dollars in, in less than a year. So it kind of gave you the scale, the size of money that's being injected into the system. And then that also ties into what Tony's saying about the top earners. They're benefiting the most from the stimulus dollar as it drives up stock prices and, and those equity investments that they have. Kind of a very unusual time that we live in and a time for, for caution, but also prudent investment in your programs, especially, you know, Tony's talked about how you plan and use those one-time dollars to stabilize your operations and provide for the student needs. And then positioning yourself for potential, you know, deficits that are on the hot horizon. At least that is what's projected by the LAO and the Department of Finance and something to pay attention to. They could, you know, switch, get turned off. And I, I talked, when I talked to the districts, if the stock market declines significantly and doesn't rebound, you know, it's like Tony said, we're going to get the pneumonia. And it, it happens quickly. That's the kind of thing. And so I want to commend you, members of the board, for your work. Tony's work and, you know, you've, you've got a team over there that's put together a recovery package. You, I, it really caught my attention that you are restoring your Fund Seventeen Reserve. Congratulations, your OPEB reserve, congratulations. That's what got you out of trouble. That's what gave you time to respond to the last tough fiscal cycle. And you're sort of like, I, I would liken it to the things that Jerry Brown did. He paid off all the debt and he put some money in the bank. And so when this thing hit, you had some resiliency. So congratulations to you and moving in that direction. I think other boards may not have been as cautious as you have been. And you may in the future be glad that you did so. So Tony, I don't know if I hit exactly, but.
Text in the mail, Bill.
Yeah, okay, fine. I'm, 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 you know, and I'll speak for Superintendent Mack. It's, it's not fun necessarily being in the county role. Especially in difficult financial times, we see people really challenged by, by conditions that are sometimes just completely out of your control. But if you do have some resources to fall back on, it gives you some options and flexibilities to, to adapt to rapid change. My guess is there's been more destabilizing elements taking place and we're likely to see destabilizing events in the, in the future. So we want to be prepared for that.
Okay. All right. That was, that was super helpful. I believe you now. Okay. So, all right. That's great. And then you talked about positive certification. Oh, AB, well, AB twelve hundred, you know, we always trailblaze here, right? Either one way or the other, we're trailblazing. So.
Well, it was Richmond Unified, just to be clear. We are now West Contra.
Yeah, well, you know, we rose from the ashes, right? Is that the? And then positive certification. So just my comment on that. I mean, you know, it's, that's great that we can meet our budget for the next two years and we should be commended and thank, actually the last board, I mean, it wasn't really this board, but, but, you know, we are declaring a positive certification on, on the skeleton. We are, we are hollowed out underneath the eyes and, you know, we're, it's, it's in some ways false that, you know, okay, you're good, you can make it for two years, but we're down to the chasses, basically. So that is what it is. I mean, I guess we should all be commended for, you know, living on the, you know, rations, but you know, we should be mindful to, to invest when we can and be nimble about it, if we can. So. That wasn't really a question. Is there anything else I need to know on that? No, it's a question.
You need to ask the question.
Let me throw one more thing to, is there anything else I need to know? I've, that's a tough question to handle. But also I, there is one thing that occurs to me. And Tony did bring up the idea that FICMAT is, you know, you, you have triggered the study there. So I think that'll be an important document and an important process to get through. And the findings of FICMAT will be something that you want to, you know, this is an objective, independent evaluation of your condition. And so I think that'll be important for you to, to evaluate that as, as that comes forward.
But it is a deficit evaluation. There is no commendations in there. That's the way it's designed. And I'll write this up to explain it. So they're looking, they're not looking to find good things. They're looking just what are the risks? That's what that review is. But it does allow me to look at, are there areas that I can put more oversight into that maybe will help us for the future? And that's the way I look at it. But it is definitely a deficit model. There is no little shiny stars at the end.
Well, the fact that they're here and they're looking at us and actually that's, it's a good thing, right?
I, I agree. I, I've always never shied away from an analysis under the hood. So we're ready, we're organized, we're moving.
Okay. President Phillips, any other questions on this? We'll move to public comment.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. So I guess we can go to public comment.
Let me take a look and see if there's any hands. Give them a moment. There are no hands.
Okay.
That's it for public comment.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for being here for this and thank you for your work on this. And thanks to everybody for sucking it in and we all sucked it in. We're all, we're all, we're all skinny now. So good. All right. Great. So we have like eight minutes left for vacation buydown. How much time do you need and can you, do you want to?
One minute.
You need one minute. Are we going to done the five or should we extend? I, I really do have to go, but I have, you know, I could do like five, 10 or something.
I think we can make it unless there's too many comments. Let's, let's try.
Okay.
So vacation buydown. So vacation buydown, last year, we did a buydown. In our contracts for our classified employees, they earn vacation days. They can get up to 300 hours in their contract. 300 hours is approximately two years worth of vacation. Last year, we knew that nobody could take vacation because of the pandemic. Everyone was pretty much working there. You couldn't go anywhere. You couldn't do anything. And most of us had been working all the way through. So the buydown helped and folks got down to 150. We anticipated when we did that, that the pandemic was going to be over in June or July. And that we'd be back the way things are. Well, it did not work out that way in any way. And so we're sitting here now in March and everybody, in fact, it's worse than before. Because nobody could take a day off. I have not taken a day off other than holidays since, well, actually since January of 2020. I think I took a vacation day around the Christmas time. So we're now going two years back almost. And so what we have is we're accruing this unfunded liability. And that's really what I want to talk about. Unfunded liabilities are sick leave, their vacation leave, their post-employee benefits. These are things that we have to pay that aren't in the budget. And so we have one-time monies right now. This is a good use of one-time money while you have the money to pay the vacation off. One, the people haven't worked, they're exhausted. It, it benefits them because they technically have worked for free by not taking vacation. So you're compensating for what they've already done there. And two, it takes away the liability from the district. And so we recommend we do exactly what we did last year, offer those employees that could not take vacation to have it bought down. Because once you get to 300 hours, you can't earn anymore. So now you're losing what is your right, but it's worse than that because you still can't go anywhere. So you're stuck having to work and it creates a morale issue as well with the people that worked this hard. So we would recommend that the board allow us, once again, it's not a negotiated item, it's just, we just need. To go forward and do that, to bring down that liability. This will take away from, if the state does go and start not funding us and then people leave. We have to pay it out anyways. We don't want to have that big liability. So we'd like to pay down and honor the fact that people have worked all year, basically for free all those days.
Okay. So that's the positives. What's the negatives of this?
It's, it is between a million and a million and a half that otherwise would drop to the bottom line is carryover. That we could use one time for something else today. But if we, if they ultimately leave two years from now and we don't have the money. It's going to come out and require cuts to address because we don't have it built into the budget.
Mr. President Phillips, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Clark, since you're sitting here, I'm calling you into, I'm calling you into service. Your thoughts?
I have done the same thing. The, what Tony's suggesting is, is appropriate. That what he may not have fully developed is the idea of the inflationary cost of the accrued vacation. It actually appreciates and it becomes more expensive year over year. So there's an inflation factor. So by, by addressing and reducing the liability. You're actually paying it off while it's cheaper. And he's right that it could impact you in a downturn and layoffs where then you're going to pay that stuff out and you're going to pay it off at a higher rate.
So I think I'm getting a thumbs up out of you. Yeah. Would you cap it at a certain amount or lottery it? Or I mean, like, I don't know, I'm just.
Do you have a policy, Tony, as far as what you?
We do have a policy that they cap at 300 hours. Last year, we only took them down one year. This year, and learning that they got back too quick, we'll probably take them down a little farther and allow them to. Because you don't want to keep having to come back to it year after year after year. The idea is to get it down to a lower liability and then manage that people take their vacation like they're supposed to, so they can stay healthy and balanced. Which is hard in the pandemic, but we're getting out, we're going back. It's going to happen. Oh, and the last piece I'll say is this, we really need everybody to work between now and fall. And we really don't want them to take vacation so we can get back to serving kids. So that's the other challenge. Is that if they could go, we really need them not to, because we don't have enough people as it is. So that's another reason why to pay it down, probably even more important than the other two. And that's it with two minutes left for. Questions, comments, and everything else.
I don't have any questions. I, I mean, I guess we write it up and bring it to the board for full approval. That's my.
Yeah, I'll talk to the board in closed session.
Okay.
Under negotiation.
Oh, enclosed, enclosed session. Okay.
Yeah, it's not an item.
Okay. All right. And then public comment on this?
Looking, there is none. Wait, there is one. Oh, no, she's just waving. Okay. Do you have a comment? Yes, Maria.
Oh, there is a comment.
I don't see anybody with their hand up. Is it you, Maria?
Oh, Maria has a comment. Maria, go ahead.
Go ahead and unmute, Maria.
I can't hear you.
Oh, do I have to uninterpret you? Is that it? Okay, let me see here. Let me try ending and see if that works.
Okay, yeah. My, my comment was just going to be, you know, being an employee and having the ability to buy out my vacation time. Would you give this option to people who before, I know we had that option at the end of the year? Would you give this option before the year ends? Because I, because I do know that folks might be in financial distress now. And putting, you know, waiting until the end of the school year might put them in further financial distress. Thank you. That was my comment.
Thank you.
And now you can attack me back.
Okay. There we go. I just learned how to undo and do interpretation. So that was cool.
Learning every day. Is there any other public comment?
There is not.
Okay, so moving on to discussion. President Phillips, do you have any discussion items?
My comment is in line with the statement that we need. People to work and the difficulty that there may be in finding people for the fall. Dr. Wall, there is an article that just came out in EdSource. And the title of this article is, what's the title of this article? Make sure I give it to you. California teacher shortages could make reopening schools for in-person instruction difficult. And as we have these conversations around. Measures like the one you're trying to take. And even. TFA, for example. This article I think would be helpful because sometimes people need to hear information from more than one source. So you might want to shoot that article to the entire board because I think it helps put some of this stuff into context.
Glad to. And that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, that was, that was a terrific comment. Yeah, that was terrific. So thank you for that. I also would like to recommend that we, we do discuss like ASAP. As one of our commentators. Gave a great suggestion that there may be severe financial distress now and why wait? So I'd like to consider that. And then my final comment is that I really want to change the culture here. So that people are working at a decent, normal pace and not killing themselves. So I'm committed to that. And that, okay, so I think we're going to wrap up that item. And then we'll move on to number three, which is our next meeting date is March 19th, 2021. And we have the scintillating topic of audits.
Maybe we, we may be late. It's in the Friday. So, so we may be asking to delay that one if we're not going to have the audits ready. We'll know in a couple of days. Because of the pandemic, it's been a challenge. They may make it at the last minute. We may have to push it to the April meeting.
Okay, well, I could think of lots of other things that we could be discussing. So it's not, no shortage there, but.
We'll be ready.
Um, okay, good. Well, I thank everybody for this. This was extremely helpful. I thank you all for your, your time and. Thank you to our, our visitors. Anytime, come pop in. So you see, love it. And I'm adjourning at 5:03 and everybody have a fantastic weekend.